That one's yours.
All right, thank you.
Leave that.
If I need something that's real, otherwise another place that I have found.
It is now 5:02 PM and I would like to call to order the August 14th, 2017 Board Committee Meeting of the Board of Trustees. Let the minutes reflect that we have a quorum with the following members present. Connie Asparza, Steve Mead, Viola Garcia, Paul Shanklin, and Dr. Kimberly Booker. Not present are Patricia Bourgeois and Rose Avalos. The purpose of this meeting, or the purpose of this Board Committee meeting today is to consider the names, school names, and that process. So, we will send it over to you, Mr. Chair. Paul Shanklin is the Chair of the Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Our intent this evening, and there's Rose.
And there's Rose.
And let the minutes reflect, it's 5:03 that Ms. Avalos has joined the meeting.
And what did you see when you drove up outside?
Does it have her name on it?
No, but...
Has your title?
Yes.
Good names. Oh, it has names?
Well, it doesn't have names, it says Reserve for Board of Trustees.
Oh, okay.
Well, we just did four because everybody knew it just...
Okay, we have just called the meeting to order and Mr. Shanklin was just going to begin.
Okay, we're here today to give names to some schools that we have a necessity for. It is my understanding that the last working meeting that Dr. Blanson communicated with the Committee of the number of names that were needed, and there were ten schools that needed to be named. I will tell you that we are going to be offering seven or eight names tonight, but leaving the other two open for flexibility. I would also like to take, I want to say judicial notice, but I'd like the Board to take notice of the policy and the criteria that we have discussed and voted on ad nauseam, and that the Committee has looked at that criteria, looked at the policy, and we have abided by the policy. Given that, I would like to tell you who we are now proposing as a slate, and with a couple of exceptions.
Before you begin, we have a folder, so it's not in the folder?
No, no.
Okay.
I'm about to hand these out.
Just wanted to make sure.
What the Committee is proposing, we're proposing to name the Career and Technical Education High School after Dr. Archie Blanson. We're proposing Lauder Middle School for Ernest Mendel. EC Pre-K School Lou Vardeman. West Mount Houston Middle School Rick Ogden. Townsend Boulevard Middle School to Anne Hassan. Greenspoint EC Pre-K Merlin Griggs Senior. East Aldine Early College Rose Avalos. And the Resource Center and Staff Development Center Dr. Wanda Bamberg. We understand that there are two other schools under consideration, and that's Rayford Intermediate School and Cypress Elementary School. And in case the Board decided that it would be more appropriate to take one of these people and name one of those schools after them, we, you know, we're leaving that open to the Board, but we also have other names that we have suggested. Topping that list is Dr. Viola Garcia. And I want to say, Dr. Garcia, that we had spoken earlier in this process, and then you'd given me your opinion about whether your name should be considered, but I wanted to let you know that you were high on the consideration list. Also Marion Jones, Emmett Rock, Wilma Statchner, Strechner, Pierre Marion, and Steve Mead. Our reasoning was such, we looked at retirees and people for the last fifteen, twenty years. And the fact that you're employed by Aldine for twenty, twenty-five years says a lot, especially given contracts are renewed all the time, if you weren't being at least proficient in your job or something, you wouldn't be there. However, Board members are volunteers, and the fact that these people have been on the Board that long and have volunteered their time that long, I just, I thought deserved recognition. Given the changes in our policy and what we used before, it allowed us to bring in Merlin and Rick to be named, which I thought was also very appropriate. So, we have a little flexibility there, but if there's no further discussion, or if there is discussion, I open it up now.
Who's Marion Jones?
Is that supposed to be Maureen?
Isn't Maureen, Maureen Jones, sorry.
Is it, how you spell a name? Is it M-A-R-I-N-E?
No, M-A-R-I-N-E.
M-A-R, okay, I-N-E.
I think I was saying, you just like to say something?
No.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, was there... I'm sorry, my mouth is full, let me just chew.
Thank you, Mr. Shanklin. I just wanted to ask before the other Board members, is there anything else that the Committee members would like to say?
I would like to say, when we were looking at the criteria and the policy, and honestly, Dr. Garcia, the work that you have done in the district without pay, you know, commitment, dedication, it sparked our interest to go a trailblazer route. You know, people that are really setting the example, what we are looking for in Aldine, we know in other districts, we looked at the traditions, we saw everything that they were doing, and also, we want people to know that this what hard work looks like, this is what the nation's best look like. You know, a lot of times in the public, educators get a bad rap, but you never hear about people like this, that are doing great things, that are committed. And although some of these people are receiving a salary, these people are going above and beyond to make sure that this district is the best. You know, a paycheck is one thing, but putting your heart, your soul, your time in it, being an example, they could have gone anywhere, but they stayed here when it was good, when it was bad, when it was ugly, whatever, they were here, putting in the hard work and everything that we asked for. So, it's like an example, like this is what we're, this is what we're doing in Aldine. And I think it's setting a standard. Like, look, look, look at Aldine. And I know it's kind of raised some eyebrows and some attention, like, look, we see what they're doing in this district, they mean business, and we do.
The other thing, only other thing I'd like to add to that, is that in a few years, this Board may look very, very different. Given, I may get emotional. When the schools are up and running, when the students have gone through and graduated, it'll be forgotten, and I don't want you forgotten. You've worked very hard. So, we think everybody's deserving, and we're putting it forward that way. Sorry.
You know, traditionally, we've not named a school for someone who's still around. Well, I'm not planning to go anywhere, but not right now. I just, I'm not sure that that's the best, it's the best time, at least for me.
I'll bring up something. Connie and I were at HISD the other day, and they were naming the auditorium after a school board member that had just passed. And we heard the same thing, that while he was alive and while he was a sitting Board Member, they knew about his illness. So, he was alive, he was a Board Member, wasn't planning on going anywhere. What it would have meant to him, we heard this Thursday, Thursday, and true, none of us are planning anything. Gosh, my heart bleeds, I mean, Merlin was the first person that greeted me on the Board. Rick, nobody's planning anything. And for those people who are still here, and Rose, if you feel it's inappropriate, we understand, and you can withdraw your name, and the Board can vote on another name for there. We've got lists, we've got other people that were there. But again, given life and time, you know, I'd just like you to consider that, because it's like Kim said, we started this process with you in mind, Dr. Garcia. And it led to everything else, and when we started looking at it, we may never get this opportunity again to name these buildings. I mean, everything is going to be up and running in a couple of years, and life as we know it, it will be, it will be gone. We'll remember, you know, and I didn't want to leave it to another Board to honor the people that we felt should have been honored.
And I would just like that, and going back to policy, because I know we're in a meeting, you know, this is a committee, it's not inappropriate, because we made sure that the policy reflected that we can nominate people that are still alive, that are still working, that are still here in Aldine, so we put that in there for that reason, so we wouldn't be out of line or out of order. You know, we, it was, we agreed to that, so we just want to honor, it's, it's nothing wrong with changing, changing up. Who says that you have to be deceased or retired to have something named after you? If you fit the criteria, why not? Aldine is doing great things. It's time for us to continue to great things.
That's all we have, Madam President.
Well, this is a lot. I just want to say that I'm deeply honored, and I know that I've talked with the Chair before about consideration of my name, and I'm, again, honored. It's a really tough situation, and it's not as if people, you know, we have named buildings after people. I don't know, Archie's the one that has the longer memory on this maybe, and maybe Wanda, but, you know, Sunny, Nadine, Bill Plummer, you know, so many of the people that have, as both of you have shared, made this district what it is, are still with us. You know, they still celebrate and go to those schools and share with the children, and the children get to know them and experience them. Sarah Hill, you know, they're still people in the community now. What is probably true about the naming of a school for them is that they had left the position they were in, whether the employment position or the voluntary, volunteer position that they held. And so, that's what is, is, is sort of the tension there, at least for me, you know, knowing that a decision, a vote will take place, and, you know, sort of, sort of a self-serving vote here, should my name elevate to one of the considerations. But, I mean, it's not as if, it's not that the, that the honor is not accepted, it certainly is accepted, and sure, it could be, you know, that a rejection may mean, as you've said, that a future Board would say, never mind, but I don't know, I still, I still appreciate, I appreciate it very much.
And I will put it out for the people sitting in front of us, if anyone feels the way that you do, if Rose feels that way, you have the freedom to just ask for your name to be withdrawn, and, and we will, you know, consider, like I said, there are other people there, so, you know, and we will, we will honor that request, we'll honor that request.
And perhaps for some, because there are a number here, I mean, there's one, two, three, four, so it's perhaps some time, right, to think about, really, do I, do we, do we really want to have, do they individually, I'm just saying, do they individually want to respond at this moment, when it's presented, or do they want to have, do we, do we as a courtesy provide them the time to reflect and think about it? But in any case, I, I, we'll just, we'll, I mean, I'll just open it up, unless the two of you have any other thoughts from the Committee, we'll just let the entire Board then...
Personally, much like when you spoke to me, it is an emotional visceral decision, and I understand. I'm not sure what thinking about it too long is going to do. I mean, we're here, we've, we have now, this process out for way, way too long, you know, to say, table it again or something. If, if Rose wants her name withdrawn right now, there are other things, she can let us know if she wants us to reconsider that, but we can go on with what we want. Same thing for Dr. Bamberg or Dr. Blanson, you know, if you want your name withdrawn, let us know, we'll go back to the process and renaming something else. But I'm just starting to feel like, feel like that it is being, you know, kind of drug out.
No, that's not my intent. The other, the other consideration, and I don't, I'm not going to speak for these two here, but when I look at the suggested locations, in my head, I would almost switch those because of the relationship that Mr. Blanson had as the, you know, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, and all of the work related there to Resource Center and Staff Development of those new employees, and...
They're here, HR's here.
No, 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 but I'm saying that your work, your work with the push for current technical education, I mean, in my head, I'm almost flipping the places, and so even that's a consideration.
The polling that I did, and I spoke to about eighty-five different people, the only near unanimous vote from the community, from staff and everything else, was Dr. Blanson and CTE, for whatever that is. I mean, now, you can chime into that, what you wanted, but there, if, if there was a clear mandate from, from the Committee, if we were naming somebody, it was to put Dr. Blanson in this position. Of course, the Board can do whatever the Board wants, right? So, I, other than that, I'm not tied to anything else. Everything else was discussed, weighed out, and put along, and put along those things. But that was the only one that had a clear mandate as to what should we name after, or if we were considering this, who should it be?
You know, so I just want everybody, we're making a consideration that we, I know feelings are high, but when we stick to the matrix, you know, when we thought of Ms. Avalos, she has lived in this district since she was two, you know, she knows Aldine, she knows the MacArthur area, that's her. You know, she's been a principal, she could have went home, relaxed, and she is on the Board, even when she wasn't feeling well, she was here, you know, all of that was in consideration. And then we tried to connect her with the area that she served, you know, we thought about all of this, you know. We looked at this, we had the matrix, everybody had a copy of it, so we've been, you know, thinking about this and looking at the areas, because that was one of the thing on the matrix, you know, where did the people live, where did they service, where did they volunteer, and we wanted to respect those areas.
All right, Board members?
How many people know who Lou Vardeman is? I have no earthly idea who Lou Vardeman is.
Until we started doing the work, and that goes back to what we're saying, but Lou started...
Was nominated by the community, we had letters after letters after letters, and then we had this, we, we don't have to know them, the community knew these people, and Dr. Blanson is very familiar with, with...
He started.
Lou is the one who is behind the curriculum for our pre-K centers. She was a pre-K specialist and was in that position for forty-five years.
I remember her.
Design PK program.
She's responsible for the design and the curriculum and all the materials, the way we began our pre-K centers.
Does she still have family in the neighborhood?
She's alive?
No, she, she passed away this Christmas. She lived over off of Crispin.
You said the east side?
She lived off of Crispin's, on the other side of Mail Round, so she grew up in the community and lived, well, she lived in the community for many years, and she trained our pre-K teachers for many years, and kindergarten teachers.
Steve, you're, you're making a point that what, maybe I wasn't articulate in making, there wasn't anybody more important to that segment of Aldine education than Lou Vardeman. That was, and if you don't know who that is, you know, we are honoring her now, but...
So, people can get to know who she is.
You know what I'm saying, it's, what, what is the honor doing? You know, it's, we are recognizing her for what her did, but, for what she did, but no one in the, in the community, it's not going to mean anything to them. Someone a little bit more contemporary will mean something to. But I, your point is well taken, it's not that Lou isn't deserving, or maybe should have been long before now, but looking at that history, how do you ignore that?
No, I just never saw it, you know, in the letter, so I just knew, didn't know who she was. My, my thoughts on naming people, and I have no trouble for Rose or anybody being named, because my, my whole philosophy is, and I'm not saying this is being negative to anybody, but a lot of people just work for a salary, and they, they work for a salary for years, and that's all they do. We have people here that do more than that, okay, but it don't, it should definitely not be just because of longevity, because everybody has a job and they get paid for doing the job. I'm more for doing, naming things for people that've done more, like a Rick Ogden, because Rick had gone to TSB, he belonged to all kinds of organizations and stuff, helping the community, doing things in the community, other than his, whatever his job was, okay, and all the years he's been. So, I'm not, just because somebody had been with us a long period of time, does it, does it make it necessarily a naming deal? Although I think the names you've mentioned up here have good names, and I just liked the idea recently that we just named, another school that just named a, a big building after their superintendent, had been there a long period of time, and I can't think of what school it was now, a big center they're naming after him, or some big high school.
Our area?
The one, was it, was it Klein, what was his name?
Oh, Jim Kane, he's a high school.
They're naming it for Kane, I think nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, it's his Kane, the Kane High School over there on Spring Cypress, Klein Kane.
And the, the other thing is, given what you were saying, Mr. Ogden's input was invaluable on this, and he also believed that, like I said, that we have tradition, but tradition needs to change. The idea, because I ran across, I ran it by him, that we're thinking about naming some schools after current Board Members. He did not, you know, dissuade us from doing so in any way, shape of form. But longevity in and of itself doesn't carry the damage. I mean, you, you look at Merlin, you know, it was only ten, eleven years, but again, it's, it's an honor well deserved.
All right, Board members, we have a recommendation from the School Names Committee. There are...
I would like to say something.
Locations, okay.
I mean, hearing all that you have, has been said, and being new to the Board, I understand, and, oh, what, what you're saying behind the name of each one, but I, the only concern I have, and that's really not even a concern, is that because as Board members, we will, we'll need to be able to go out to the community when we're asked the rationale that came behind the naming of each one of these people for the schools, and although I am new, I also thought to flip-flop the career education with number one and eight, it's weird, but that's what I thought. And looking at the list here, we're took, we're looking at at least five people, how many people are current Board Members? And, let's see, that's one, two, three, four, five. I just don't want to be in a situation where, where criticized, well, look at them, they named all the schools after them. You see what I mean? Do you understand what I'm saying, Rose?
But the recommendation, if you look at the recommendation, the recommendation is eight.
Right, and we still have two.
No, but I mean, the eight, if, your recommendation today is eight.
My recommendation is the eight.
Yeah, they're recommending eight. So, that's, that's, that's the only thing that, you know, I'm trying to think ahead, that we're very cognizant of that.
If, if you want an argument, I can give you one.
Well, no, I can, I, I understand, and I'm, I think I can do that on my own.
Okay.
But I'm just saying that, that's something for us to keep in mind, because like Rose says, you know, whether it's the right thing to do or the wrong thing to do, it's, it's immaterial, that we wait many times until the person's passed before they are recognized for their, for their contributions.
And I disagree with that. I don't think we have to wait.
That's what I'm saying, it doesn't, it's immaterial, I'm saying that, Steve, yeah, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. It, it's just a matter of, of being able to, and the word's not really even defend, but it just to...
No.
Just to be able to, why they were recognized, to be able to offer that rationale.
We have a policy, and we have a criteria that has been voted on.
And myself, now I understand who this Lou, who this lady Lou, who is Anne Hassan, can you tell me who that she is?
Did everybody look at the matrix that we passed out about a month ago, that we had in our folders, because everything that you all are saying, the Board looked at all of that and took everything in consideration.
Criteria, but I don't remember the name.
I bet we don't have that elder document, we probably don't have it with us tonight.
Okay, but we, we did get a copy.
That's the reason we went, we went through the policy and preserving.
And what they have done, the contributions, Ms. Alonda gave us this, so we studied this.
Can you please tell me who that lady is?
She was the last Chief Financial Officer before Tamika took place, she was, she retired in January, yeah.
But you, so you know her.
You know, I meant who she is, but, you know, you only see one person for five minutes.
Yeah, and she was a previous principal and a previous area superintendent.
What would be the justification for Anne?
For Anne, again, from my tenure on the Board, you know, given the sound financial advice we got from her, given her knowledge of the, of finances and everything else, I think she is part of the foundation why our bond stuff went through, that our credit rating is good, and that we have been so financially sound, never missed an audit. I think that's very important, not to mention her moving through the system, and, you know, and, and being a wonderful employee all of this time, just weighing all of that, that was what we weighed with that. Yes.
A couple, just a couple of things. I have, I have my hesitations about me and also Archie, but I will tell you, because y'all have said this, it kind of surprised me, the idea that my name is with number eight is pretty spot on.
Thank you.
Because I am the one who came through the Curriculum Department, those were my people, and I, the Staff Development and Curriculum is my, is my strong suit. And, and I could, you know, and Archie has been working with the CTE Center, and, and he's been managing, I used to work with, years ago, used to work with CTE, but Archie's been working with CTE, and I think that vision and everything has been there. The other thing I'll say, and I'm, and, and whatever y'all decide to do is, is fine. Mr. Mendel was around in nineteen fifty-two, he, he actually, well, actually, the building was named for him, wasn't it, in nineteen fifty-two? And the building turned fifty years old in two thousand and two. And I, I don't know that there's anybody in that community who's still, other than the name of the school, which we were struggling with the concept, what can we do in that community to continue to honor Mr. Mendel? But I, you know, I just, to name a totally different facility after him, I was, I was wondering if there was something we could do to, and somebody said, well, let's change the name of Eskamiya, well, no, because that's a, that's a, that's a Board Member who's still alive, and, and so anyway, but I was just wondering if there was something else we could do to commemorate his name, and, and I have to tell you that I, I feel bad having my name on this list and Maureen Jones, her name, not on this current list.
I, I can tell you, and that was interesting, that's, that's when politics came into the discussion, especially with some people that I spoke with over at the Acres Home, in the Acres Home area. First black female, I mean, a lot of firsts, a lot of wonderful things, but a, not a well-liked person. Say what you will, I mean, again, we looked at it and thought that she was deserving, and, and there has to be a reason why she wasn't named previous to this. When other Boards were much more contemporaneous with her, that knew her and everything else, there had to be opportunities for somebody like that to have been honored.
This is the first time we've done a naming since she's been gone.
Okay.
Well, I put her with, my suggestion was to put her with Cypresswood, I think it would just flow with that area, because there's a lot of other Jones in that same area, and I'm like, why not another Jones right there in that same area for Cypresswood? And I'm like, why not another Jones right there in that same area for Cypresswood? That was my thoughts.
And, and...
And it depends on who you talk to that says...
There might be a little bit of a conflict with Mr. Jones, I think. Yeah, I have, that's his school, okay? That's Mr. Jones's school and I don't know that that would be a...
Well, I was, she's talking about Cypresswood.
I'm not talking about taking someone's name off a school, I'm talking about...
You're saying in that area?
Well, but to have another Jones named elementary, I mean, another elementary named Jones, that might be hard.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
I was, and you know, she actually was a secondary person and did a lot of work at middle school. And I was actually thinking of, you know, if there, but, but Rayford is going to wind up being an elementary too. So, to have another campus named Jones when you got an E.C. pre-K and already having an elementary, I think that would create some confusion.
And I think, you know, your comments about some people don't like her, well, that depends on who you talk to.
Guys, I can say that about everybody that we talk to.
Sure, sure.
Every name that's on that list, somebody, someplace had something negative to say about.
Sure.
Every name on the, you know, he who is without sin, you know, type, type, type of thing. So, you know, to, you know, to, to have another Jesus out of this list, we didn't happen. And as far as, as, as Mendel, same thing with Lou Vardman. Guys, like I said, that's way down the road. And that's why we didn't name a couple of schools for the flexibility of moving these around. These are people that we just think need to be honored. We paired them up the best we could with the knowledge that we had. We thought about, you know, you for that, we thought about Archie for his, we gave a lot of thought to Rose, you know, given, given that area. There were letters asking for Mr. Griggs in Greenspoint. You know, those types of things were important. We took all of that into consideration and there, there's some flexibility there. But we, these are the people we think that should be honored, wherever you put them, if you flip-flop them or if you do any of that stuff.
Would it be appropriate to go through each one of the lists and have a discussion so we can move and get this done?
Well, like I said, I presented them forward as a slate. That doesn't mean it has to go that way. We're, we're now, we've handed it over to the president of the board.
No, but because you've handed it over and because you are now here, that if we had questions, then that way that could be settled and we could move forward on naming these schools, naming this eight, so we could at least, you know, there may be some things that I'm missing.
I mean, that, that way we...
I kind of, I kind of agree with Wanda about Mendel. You know, there's probably not a living relative around here anymore.
Yes, there is. I mean, they're there, but we had a, we had a celebration there a while back with that family, didn't we, at Mendel?
Two thousand and two.
Yeah, we had, we had a ceremony for the age of him, they were, their family was there. Now, they may not be living around here, Rose, but I know they're alive, but I know, we had the, I think it was fiftieth anniversary.
It was the fiftieth because the school...
And their family came out and talked about him.
Yeah, the school opened in nineteen fifty-two and then we had the fiftieth anniversary in two thousand and two. And he died not long after that school was built or right before the school was built. He died young.
Let me, there is, there is a recommendation to consider each of these individually and Kim just looked and asked the question. We didn't get in our packet today, but I, and I brought my packet from the last time, but there was the, the listing of each. So, if we were to go person by person, I think it would be good if we did have the...
Yolanda's going to bring those, some copies.
Does anybody else already have theirs? Kim has hers.
I thought I left mine.
I thought I brought here.
Well, Kim's going to get some, I mean, Kim. Yolanda is going to get some copies so we can look at that.
Yeah, and if I can amend Connie's motion, then we can go through the list and see where we have unanimity or where we have a majority vote, if not a, a unanimity. And then we can, then we can just focus in on the ones where we don't.
That's excellent.
And progress.
That way we can make progress and really move forward so we don't have to table this again and, and just, you know, because this is, I, I do want to say that I like this list really better than that just the first one. But I think in an effort for us to be more unanimous, you know, like you're saying, for unity's sake and be done with it, and then that way we can move forward.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, and that we were deliberate about each one. I give each one their due consideration individually.
I think I, I should excuse myself when we get to that, my name.
When you get your name.
Okay, and we start with number one?
Isn't the opportunity to really think about?
So, people can be honest.
I'm going to say I have no problem with a, a sitting board member being named like Rose or whoever. I'll be honest with you, if you ever name one of me, do it before I die. I want my kid, I want my kid to see it. I want them to see, I've been working this neighborhood for forty, fifty years helping people and I don't have a problem if, if, if I ever get named. I want my kid to know about it because I've done what I do for my kids and my family as well as I have for Aldine, you know. And I do think there's important things that we look at when we talk to people. I don't think it's just because somebody writes a letter. Anybody can write a letter. I can go out and have twenty-five or thirty people write a letter, name a school after me.
And I wouldn't have a problem if the board decided to do something else and not include me now. I really don't because I'm still going to be around.
There's a, if you want to abstain from the vote, when we get to, get to your name...
Can we get started?
And when we get there?
They want to wait for Yolanda.
Yeah, when we get there, they will.
Well, well, I said, let's, if I may.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, do you want, we set this up so if y'all wanted to go into executive session, you could.
Right, I was going to say to you, would you...
If we're going to talk about personnel and individuals, we've already been doing that, but if you're going to continue...
Would you like to do that? That's what I was going, that wasn't my next thing. Do you, is it appropriate to go into executive session?
It was posted so that if you wanted to, you could.
So, we could do it in here?
Well, we'd be in executive session.
We just asked them to leave.
And we won't record anymore.
Okay.
Okay, is that good?
Oh, we can do executive session and ask our friends to help to leave.
We can stay in our comfy seats.
Do you mind? You want to announce it?
Okay, we will, we will adjourn into executive session under section 551.074 Personnel Matters, section 551.072 Real Estate, section 551.071 Consultation, with Attorney in section 551.082 Student Disciplinary Matter, if any, under the Open Meetings Act. It is now five thirty-nine. Let me just make sure. Young man, would you turn the recorder off?